So, what's your question, Joseph? Say it loud so we can hear it.
My question is, uh...
Dinosaurs, right?
Yeah, where do dinosaurs fit in?
Where do dinosaurs fit in? Okay, okay. Well, absolutely. Let's go to the Book of Genesis, the first chapter. Thank you, Jesus. Lord, we ask you to give us wisdom, give us strength. Father, we ask you to open our eyes of understanding, Lord, that we might see. Open our ears that we might hear. Lord, let us see the depths of the Word of God. Give us a new gratitude and appreciation for your Word, Lord, like we've never had before, Father. Lord, we ask that you would just cover us in the blood and hide us behind the cross of Calvary, in Jesus' name. Amen, amen. Alright. So, you have, you know, different... There are different theories, you know, of evolution and, you know, some people say the earth is, you know, only a few thousand years old. And then others say that, you know, the most science will agree that the earth is millions upon millions, if not probably billions of years old. And so, you see, you see all these, you know, we have these different theories and Christians try to make... So, we have different, there's a lot of different theories, you know. Uh, you know, your standard, you know, your Christian, you know, creationist will, will say, "Well, the earth is..." If you read the Bible timeline, the Bible timeline is about 6,000 years, uh, five or six thou... about 6,000 years of history from Adam and Eve all the way over to, to, um, you know, to present day. That's about a 6,000-year timeline, if you do the math. And then, then scientists, you know, most scientists will say, because they're looking at the fossil record and they're looking at different, different things that they, they see, carbon dating, etc., and they're like, "No, that can't be right, because the earth has gotta be millions, if not even billions, of years old." So, who's right? Who's right? And, and the answer is that they're both wrong. Uh, because they don't understand their Bible. The Bible gives us very clear, uh, understanding about where, where the, where, you know, how old the earth is and what happened before. And I'll, I'll just tell you right up front, we are not the first creation that has ever existed on this earth. There were others before Adam and Eve. And, you know, so, so the scientists look at it, and there, there was a guy, his name was, I forget his, uh, Jean, Jean Cuvier, Cuvier, I believe. And he had a theory, because he looked at the fossil record, and he would look at the layers of the earth, and he could see where there have been three previous extinction events on the earth. Where there was life, there was plant life, there was animal life, there was human, human-like life, let's say. Human-like. Not, not exactly like us, but they were... Exactly, you know, you look at the, at the, you know, they have the little chart of the, that they start with, uh, the Cro-Magnon man, and then the Neanderthal man, and different ones that they have in there. And, you know, they're, they're not all exactly right either, that, that, that chart. And then they have the modern Homo sapien, you know, which is you and I. Um, but there were people, and I'm gonna prove it to you, we're gonna go in, we'll study, I'll prove it to you in the Word. There were civilizations and people that existed on the earth before Adam and Eve that were extinct, yes?
Because if I recall, like, um, everything, everything in Scripture is in chronological order. That, uh, when basically Gen... through the Book of Genesis, basically stating, uh, God created the heavens and earth, that was, of course, before that time.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was that entire period of the prehistoric era. And then, where the Bible begins with Adam and Eve.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. If you look here, let me look it up real quick, um... I don't have...
Is that a few quarters?
Yeah.
I'm a few quarters, I love it.
Yeah, the, the old, the old strongs, man. Well, there you go.
Yeah, that is a good question. Where, where they, where they, where are they when it comes to, like, salvation or not?
There were saved ones that came out of each creation. But God extinguished those creations because of their wickedness.
Ouch.
Yeah. Like he's gonna do to this one. Yeah. That's exactly right. Come on, yeah, there you go, that's exactly right.
Oh, you know, you know that they did out how it creates embryo?
Really? Wow, is that right?
And the first one that popped in my mind was nothing.
Yeah? As it was in the days of Noah. Uh, I wanna go, I wanna start here, because it goes right with what you were saying, Joey. Jeremiah 4:23.
That's why it's definitely beneficial to read Scripture in chronological order.
Exactly. Exactly. Jeremiah...
I'm trying to figure that one out. Jeremiah?
Yes, four. Now, well, keep your finger right there in Jeremiah. And let's, I'm gonna put a bookmark, we'll go back there. Keep your Jer... we're gonna go to Jeremiah 4:23. But we're gonna start in Genesis 1:1. Ain't nothing wrong with that, right? Because we go, we go here to the beginning of our creation here that existed. He says, "In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth." Period, do you see that period? Period, done. So, stop right there. "In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth." He didn't do it halfway. He didn't do it partially, but in the very beginning, God created, this is the original earth with its original inhabitants that lived on the earth. There were who knows how many millions, perhaps even billions of years ago, that verse applies. "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth." There were nations, there were kings, there were people, there were civilizations, there were, you know, all of this.
Ecclesiastes 1:9?
Ecclesiastes 1:9, there it is. "The thing which is, is the thing which hath been." Okay, "There is no new thing under the sun." You see me, even computers? Yeah? Even airplanes? Mm-hmm. If we believe what the Bible just said there, there is no new thing, no new thing under the sun.
So, everything that's to come is nothing new?
Exactly, it has...
No matter how progressive it gets?
Exactly. I mean, there is a, they dug up a, an electric battery in a coal mine in Russia. Now, you know how long it takes coal to form? Millions, perhaps even billions of years? They dug up a, a battery in a coal mine that was encased in the coal deep in the earth, and they're like, "What is this?" "There was something here before us." "There is no new thing under the sun." Period.
That's a good idea, boy, man.
The what? Right, right. Yeah, right, they, they assume a lot of things that are not quite true. But, you know, if you know your Bible and you can, you can put the pieces together, and I don't know everything, but I do know enough to know what, what the Bible says, and, and it gives us a whole lot more than people understand. But if you just understand, "There is no new thing under the sun." Ecclesiastes 1:9, "The thing that hath been is that which shall be." So, what was before is gonna be again in the future. And "That which is done is that which shall be done." And "There is no, no new thing under the sun." Rockets, automobiles, no new thing under the sun.
So, the funny thing is how the New Living Translation says it.
Okay.
History merely repeats itself. It's been done before, nothing under the sun is truly new.
Well, there you go. He says, in verse 10, "Is there anything whereof it may be said?" See? This is new. Is there anything under the sun, and even in our modern world, where we could say, "Oh, this is a new thing, there's never been computers before, there's never been rockets, there's never been whatever." You know, there's never been all these advances in medicine? No, see, the thing is, and, and they're learning this, that the scientists are beginning to understand, you know, the, 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 those, what they call cavemen, you know, they looked different, and they looked more beastly, but they were not savage and stupid. They were not walking around dragging their knuckles, you know, uh, 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 uh. Like, uh-uh, they were highly, highly intelligent beings. They weren't dumb. Because they're coming from a theory of evolution that, you know, we evolved from apes, which is a total lie. That, you know, these, these people looked different, but they were highly advanced, you know? And you can go back, like, in, they, they go to, there's places like in Peru, they have a thing called the Lines of Nazca. And if you, and, and they don't understand, and these things are like very, very old, millions of years old. But the, and there are lines cut in this big, open plain. And the only way you could, could, um, get the perspective of what's down there is if you were able to fly above in an airplane or something and see the things they've carved in this big, open plain in Peru. You know, uh, I was actually listening to a video today where they are finally beginning to understand, like, the stone circles at Stonehenge? Those were like an energy generating source. Those things carried a frequency and a vibration that vibrated off of each other and created energy and light and electricity and, you know, all kind of things. They didn't need oil, they were actually more advanced than we are.
That's why, that's why it formed in the circle. Then all, uh, circulated around each other.
Exactly right, Joey. Oh, man, it's so powerful. He said, "See, he says, 'It hath already been of old time, old time which was before us, which was before us, this creation.'" Everything that is, has already been of old time before this creation. And I'm, you know, I'm gonna prove that to you here, so... Yeah, go ahead, darling. Amen, amen. That's awesome. So, let's go back to Genesis 1:1 now, because we kinda established a little principle there. Nothing new under the sun. "In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth," full stop. Fully created, fully made, beautiful, perfect earth, the original earth and its original inhabitants. And then, verse 2, "And the earth was without form and void." So, it was perfect, it was created, it was beautiful, it had a world of inhabitants on it. And then, verse 2 comes along and messes the whole picture up, "And the earth was without form and void." So, something happened... You got it, didn't you?
Because when people say formless, that's actually, like, it really does not have darkness.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Well, and natural darkness. And a physical darkness. Because this earth fell, I, and, and I can't, probably couldn't do it tonight, but I can show you where there are three different pits that the earth fell into. The one of them is written right here, "And darkness was upon the face of the deep." And that word "deep" is tahom. And it's the same word for the bottomless pit that we read about in the Book of Revelation. The tahom is a deep, it, it's the infinite void of infinity, and it's filled, there are many things I could teach you about that, and we will go into that sometime. But this deep place, that the earth was perfect, it was beautiful, it was created, and then it fell into the deep. It fell into this void and without-form place. Does that make sense? Hmm? Space? Yeah, I mean, yeah, it, it, it's a, it's a pit, I, you know, space, I don't, I don't know.
So, basically, was there no gravitational structure?
Well, the gravitational structure was taken out. Okay? Let's... Let me, let me get... Remember that, ask me that again, okay? Don't let me leave, don't leave without me explaining that. Because I wanna show you something. But in order to get you there, I've gotta, I've gotta stair-step it so that we can, it'll make sense. But yeah, so, basically, here, here we go, let's see, if we have this, this lamp, let's pretend this is a globe and this is the earth. Okay, oh, wow. So, here's the earth. Now, who upholds the earth? Exactly. And he removed his support because of the sin of the inhabitants on this earth.
The originals, of the sin of the original inhabitants? So, therefore, the, therefore, the world went into darkness?
Yes. Yeah. Boom! Well, you just read it. "And the earth was without form and void." Absolutely. People don't even get it. That's right. That's right.
So, would that be considered the first judgment?
Yes.
That's terrifying.
Yes. He judged the earth, he's judged the earth with water four times. Here's the first one. There was a couple in the middle. The last one was Noah's flood. And then he said, "I will never judge the earth with water again." Next time, it'll be fire.
So, apparently, the other three times didn't work?
Exactly, exactly. Exactly.
Wow.
Yeah. To prove his infinite mercy and his infinite love. He'll never stop working with you. It does not matter how many times you fall. It does not matter how much you sin. The Bible says that where sin did abound, grace did much more abound. So, when this first earth fell into the deep and became without void and without form, God said, "My grace is bigger than that. I'm gonna raise the earth up out of a place of darkness, void, and without form." See, what we read here in Genesis 1 is not so much a creation as it is a resurrection. I'm gonna show you that. It's more of a resurrection than a creation. And I'll, I'll show you. He says, "So, in the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth." Boom, get the picture, stop right there. Full, full stop, created beautiful earth, God doesn't do anything halfway. He created it. Next verse, something happened. The earth, the beautiful, created, perfect earth, became without vo... with void and without form. Okay, now, Joey, you said that God doesn't do everything in chronological order, right? Well, let me take you back to, uh, Jeremiah, chapter 4. Let's go to Jeremiah, chapter 4, and God's gonna pick up, and he's gonna show you what happened before Genesis 1:1. Let me, let me get it here.
All I have to say is just proves even more of the love of God, like...
Exactly.
How, how long he waited for his creation to come back to him.
Yes.
That even though there were, there were judgments, that was all mankind's decision.
That's right.
He never changed, though we did.
That's right. Poo shah marabahaya, oh, that's powerful, Joey. He never changed. And his mercy never stops working. This earth will ultimately fulfill it, the plan of God. One day, that's why he said, "I'll make a new heaven and a new earth." The old is gonna be passed away. He's gonna make everything new, because ultimately, this earth is gonna be perfect. Ah, hallelujah, alright, let me, let me find what I'm looking for, I'm in Jeremiah, the fourth chapter, and let me read down here.
Twenty-something?
Was it 23? Yep, there it is, there it is. Now, now, understand something. The spirit of prophecy. See, we, we think a lot of times in our English, modern, Western mind, that prophecy has to do with prediction, what's gonna happen in the future. But prophecy, in, in the Hebrews, thought of prophecy as pattern, not prediction. Yeah. And again, patterns. Start thinking in form, terms of patterns when you read your Bible. And you'll, you'll, it'll unlock a lot for you. So, verse 23. And so, he's looking back here. He's looking back. "And I beheld the earth, and lo, it was..." Looking back, past tense. "...without form and void." Where, where have you heard that phrase, "Without form and void" before? We just read it over in Genesis. "And the heavens, and they had no light. I beheld the mountains, and lo, they tremble, and all the hills moved lightly. I beheld, and lo, there was no man, and all the birds of the heavens were fled. I beheld, and lo, the fruitful place was a wilderness, and all the cities thereof were broken down at the presence of the Lord by his fierce anger." He's taking you back. This fits chronologically between Genesis 1:1 and Genesis 1:2.
That explains a lot, because there's a, there's a, uh, reading plan uh, that has chronological order and starts in Jeremiah.
Is that right? That's powerful. Yes, ma'am. What, where is Jeremiah? Physically, his physical body? Was very much here on earth. But he was looking through the eyes of prophecy and the Spirit. Yeah. He's having a vision. He's seeing with prophetic vision. He says, "And lo, and I beheld, and lo, the fruitful place was a wilderness, and all the cities thereof were broken down." So, he's, there were cities before. That's why they go back into the Amazon, they go back into places like in Vietnam, and they dig up these, they, they cut back the jungle, like, there's like a huge city here, and we have no idea how old it is, or have no idea that it was even here. And, and they're trying to figure out, well, how does it fit in these 7,000, you know, 5,000, 6,000 years of chronological order in the, in the Bible? And it doesn't, because they know that these cities, some of them were way, way, way back there, oh. That make sense, Joseph? Hallelujah, he says, "I beheld, and lo, the fruitful place was a wilderness, and all the cities thereof were broken down at the presence of the Lord by his fierce anger. For the Lord hath said, 'The whole land shall be desolate,'" and listen to this, "And yet will I not make a full end." Did you see that? "I will not make a full end." "I'm gonna make the earth without form and void, but I'm not done with it yet." "I've still got a plan." And see, that applies to us. Sometimes God has to, you know, everything falls apart. Everything comes, becomes without form and void. But God says, "I'm still not done." Just because it's without form and void, and everything looks like it's falling apart, God's not done. Isn't that awesome? Alright. Phew. Mm, 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 mm. It is fantastic, wow. Alright, let's go back to Genesis, chapter 1. I wanted to insert that there, because that's what you said, Joey, that it's not all chronological. But we, the, the phrase, "Without form and void", is your, that's your wake-up call, hey, wait a minute, that, that fits right here with Genesis 1, between Genesis 1:1 and Genesis 1:2. And I'm in verse 2 here in Genesis 1, verse 2. He says, "The earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep." And the word "deep" there is tahom. It's a specific word for a specific pit that the earth fell into. And there are some others that I can show you, and, and, and I'll have to, I, I probably need to go back and look at some of my old notes and refresh my memory on that, but we'll study that sometime. But I'm just kinda giving you a surface level here. And then watch this. "And the Spirit moved upon the face of the waters." All of a sudden, now, here was a beautiful earth. It fell into the deep, or the tahom. It became without form and void in this dark, confused place. Then God says, "In that darkness, let there be light." And there was light. "And the Spirit started moving on the face of the waters." And, and the word there is like a dove. The word "moved", it, it means to hover and to flutter like a dove. And so, the Spirit, the dove began to flutter over the... And so the Spirit, the dove, began to flutter over the waters and, and draw the earth up, out of this dark place. "And God saw the light, that it was good, and God divided the light from the darkness. And God called the light day, and the darkness he called night. And the evening and the morning were the first day." Now, God didn't create the sun and the moon and the stars until several verses later. So, but he divided light and darkness right there in the very beginning. Because he's talking about spiritual darkness that had fallen over the whole face of the earth, and it became void and without form. "And God said, 'Let there be a firmament in the midst of the waters, and let it divide the waters from the waters.'" "And God made the firmament, and divided the waters which were under the firmament from the waters which were above the firmament, and it was so." Now, there are pictures that NASA has. You can Google them, go, go to YouTube. You look for hard enough, you'll see where they take rocket ships and they shoot them up like that. And before, once, the, those rocket ships will go so far, and they'll shoot through this huge barrier of water before they hit outer space. Yeah. Google it up, you'll, you'll find it. "And God made the firmament, and divided the waters which were under the firmament," I read that. "And God called the firmament heaven, and the evening and the morning were the second day. And God said, 'Let the waters under the heaven be gathered together unto one place, and let the dry land appear, and it was so.'" "And God called the dry land earth, and the gathering together of the waters he called seas." So now he's talking about water under the firmament. There's water above the firmament called heaven. There's water above heaven.
Oh wow, I found a little chart like that.
Yeah, you find it?
Yeah.
Let me see. Yes, that's it, right there. There you go. Show it, show it to them, so they'll, that, that's a good, that's a good picture. Isn't that something? Yeah. Yeah. I wish, I, I, I've got my phone, I'm recording, so I can't. Yeah, yeah. But it's, it's, you know, they, they are, they're beginning to reveal now that it's, it's actually like a, like water, water, ocean water, that, that, that these rocket ships, before they go through, they go through this barrier of water, and they'll shoot right through it. Okay. Okay, "And God called the dry land earth." Okay, here we go, verse eleven. "And God said, 'Let the earth bring forth grass, and the herb yielding seed, and the fruit tree yielding fruit after his kind, whose seed is in itself upon the earth, and it was so.'" Okay. Now, notice what the Bible says, and it's, it says, "The earth," "let the earth bring forth grass." Doesn't say that he created grass. He said, "Let it bring forth what was already there." Because in the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth, the original earth. All of that was still there, and that's why they can't understand, you know, and why some of these plants, you know, they can find a fossil of a plant embedded in a rock that is, you know, fourteen billion years old, or whatever it is. And they're like, okay, well, this fern that's fossilized in a rock, yet Christians are trying to say that the earth is only six thousand years old, doesn't make sense. It doesn't line up. But if you know your Bible, and you really understand and read the details, it's all there. So, so there, there, there it is. There's that, that old, old, you know, plant. And, and, and they, they have, you know, they dig up dinosaur bones, and woolly mammoth bones, and bones of human, human-like. They call it Cro-Magnon Man, and Neanderthal Man, and all these different kinds of creatures that are fossilized, and they know that it's, it's there. It, it's undeniable that it's there. And the reason is because it all existed before, on a, on a previous earth that was destroyed. That makes sense? Let's keep going. Right? Yeah. Well, see, let, let me tell you something, guys. The Bible and true science. There's, there's pseudoscience, but true science and the Bible do not contradict each other. Boom, perfectly. Yeah, yeah, the Fibonacci sequence. Yeah. Yeah, you see that everywhere. Look, look at your hand. Look at your, look at your forearm. This compared to this, compared to this and this is the three-six-twelve ratio. Look at your foot. Your foot compared to this, compared to this, three-six-twelve ratio. It's everywhere in nature. Everywhere. The candlestick was built on three bolo knop flower. The, 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 the three, the three sets, and then the twelve up the middle. Three-six-twelve ratio. Everywhere you look. Everywhere you look, in nature, in science, in music. The, the, the music that sounds pleasing to the human ear, and what makes certain chords go together, and we think, ooh, that sounds pretty. It's, it's based on the Fibonacci sequence, or the three-six-twelve, uh, ratio. Yeah. Now check it out. Verse twelve. "And the earth brought forth grass and herb yielding seed after his kind, and the trill, tree yielding fruit after his kind, and God saw that it was good." Let's, let's jump on down here. Oh, man, whoo, there's so much here. Yeah. No, baby, go ahead. Uh, uh, you mean all of the human creatures? They were created similar, but we are the only ones that were really, truly created in his image. They were, they were more animal-like, those creatures. And, well, I, I, I'll, I'll just tell you, okay, they were more akin to the animals than we are. That's why they had hair, and that heavy brow, and the big jaw, but they were not stupid. They were highly intelligent, but genetically, they were more akin to the animals. And that's why, in this creation, God said, jump down to verse twenty-five in chapter one. Let's see, go to twenty-four. "And God said, 'Let the earth bring forth the living creature after his kind, cattle and creeping thing, and the beast of the earth after his kind, and it was so.'" "And God made the beast of the earth after his kind." He keeps saying, "after his kind." It's very specific. And the reason is, those, one of the sins, and there's, there's places I could go to prove this to you, and I can do it if we have time. They would interbreed with animals, and that was one of the sins that God said, mm-mm. That's one of the reasons God killed them, because they were going after strange flesh. It says that over in the book of Jude. Going after strange flesh. In other words, those creatures, inhabitants of that earth, wanted to mate with animals and, and do this kinda thing. God said, "No." So in this creation, when God created this world, God made a specific law that, you know, chickens bring forth chickens, and, you know, cows bring forth cows, and humans bring forth humans. We don't cross, in, in, inter, interbreed. And that's why they've dug up, again, they dig up creatures that are like half man, half fish, or the, the centaur in Greek mythology, i- is, is man-horse. Or pan. Have you heard of the god Pan? That's a prehistoric thing, half goat, half human. Mm-hmm. Yeah. See, these are demons that go way back to prior creations. The Nephilim. And, well, the Nephilim actually have to do with this creation, which is the reason God brought the flood, was because of the Nephilim. And I, I wanna go into that with y'all sometime. That'll, that'll, yeah, blow your mind. But everything after his kind, so watch this. Verse twenty. "And God said, 'Let the waters bring forth abundantly.'" "Let the water bring forth." He didn't say, "God created fish." He said, "Let the waters bring forth the seeds that were already there." The, the things that were already living in the, in the ocean. And they found creatures that live in the ocean that are far older than anything we know about today, as far as Yes. Yes.
Like that, what you were just talking about, just inviting me about how kids in school, they dress up as a cat.
Yeah.
They have to
Yeah.
The teachers have to buy them.
Yeah.
They, if they call themselves a cat.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a demonic spirit. See, some of these demonic spirits come from previous creations, prior to this one. And they are being released, if you look in Revelation about how the pit opens up, and the pit, what, what is he talking, and, and the word is tajhom, the abyss, the, the, the tajhom, the bottomless pit. Those creatures got sent there, but in the book of Revelation, he opens it up and lets them out. And that's what's happening today. I believe the pit has already, is already being opened. And that's why you get these shape-shifting demons, and, yeah. Yes. You're absolutely right. Yeah. Yeah. You read about, the, "Jesus said, 'As it was in the days of Noah, so shall it be in the days of the coming of the son of man.'" And right before his coming, if you go back and read right here in Genesis, the sixth chapter, "How it was in the days of Noah," well, let's just pop over there real quick, since we're just studying. Let's find out how Yeah. Genesis six. "How it was in the days of Noah. And it came to pass, when men began to multiply on the face of the earth, and daughters were born unto them." See, this is where the book of Enoch comes in. And the book of Enoch is not, it's not your Bible, okay? It's not one of the sixty-six books, but I'll tell you what it is. Because the writers of the Bible quoted the book of Enoch. Paul quoted Enoch. Jude quoted Enoch. Uh, many places in the Bible, those are just a couple, where Enoch was quoted. What they believed that it was an accurate history book. They believed that it was an accurate history book, and it's quoted as an accurate history book. So that's why it does have value, Joseph, to, to look at those books. Like the book of Enoch, the book of Jasher, book of Jasher is like and, and many of the others. That, that if they're quoted in the Bible, now there's others that you're like, eh, I don't know. But if, if the writers of the Bible quoted them as a source, then you know that they believed the writings of that book to be true and reliable. Yeah. So he says, "That sons of, the sons of God, which are the angels, they saw the daughters of men, that they were fair, and they took them wives of all which they chose." In other words, these angels started coming down and having sex with women, human females. And they started having children by them. And, and, and there's actually, I saw somewhere advertised on Netflix, that there's a Netflix series coming out about a teenage girl who's been impregnated by the devil. Y'all see that? Disney, yeah. Yep.
Are you crazy?
Exactly. Exactly. Can you believe it? Yeah. Yeah. Well, again, what do they do? And they're preparing the minds of people to accept this thing, and it's gonna become, as we get closer to the coming of the Lord, guys, it's gonna become more and more and more prevalent.
Yeah, I mean, it's so obvious. They got no decency about it no more.
No, they don't even try to hide it.
They're not playing, it's like, this wasn't it.
Yeah.
That came out, I didn't watch it, because I just, that's what told me to watch it.
Good, amen.
But clearly, the, the music video is bringing people to God, because the artist is dressed up as a demon.
Uh-huh.
And it's like, carrying people back to Jesus.
Yeah. Wow, that's right. So he says here, verse three, "And the Lord said, 'My spirit shall not always strive with man, for that he is also flesh, yet his days shall be numbered a hundred and twenty years.'" God said, "Okay, that's enough." He said, "I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna strive with man." And God numbered man's days to be no more than a hundred and twenty years in those days. He said, "From then on, people don't live, the human body is not designed to live beyond a hundred and twenty years." Now today, you might find some people that live to be a hundred, a hundred and six, some, a little more than that. But after that, our bodies shut down, because the reason being that if God had allowed those people to live eight hundred years like they did before the flood, the, they would have just gone further and further and further into wickedness.
Wow, that explains a lot with the, I did not, I mean, I was always curious why, why they were able, why they were living up to that age, like, and why nowadays, it's just like, like eighty, ninety. Wow. Wow.
Yeah. Yeah. And there were giants in the earth in those days. And, and, listen, and also after that. So, there was giants before the So there was giants before the flood and there were giants after the flood. No. Well, let me tell you what happened. Man, y'all are, y'all are, woo, y'all are working me hard tonight. Listen, I love it though. Those wicked spirits. See, the spirits of the giant, the, their, the, these giants, their bodies died. But their wicked spirits were loosed. So that when, when the children of Israel got over into Canaan's land, did they find giants over there? Was Goliath a giant? He was a Nephilim. He was a, he was a spiritual offspring. There's a lot of stuff there. There's a lot of mysteries there. Okay. I don't know, but it, it, I, it, it could be because there was, yeah, I mean, they certainly gave themselves over. Does it? Yeah, the siren, you know, well, see, here's another thing. A lot of this stuff you read in Greek mythology about Zeus and Apollo and some of the Icarus and all these. That was the, the, there, that's not just stuff made up. Those are stories that came down from before the flood. Those are stories of these giants, these Nephilim. And, and, and if you read the Babylonian records, the Babylonian stuff from the, the tablets of Gilgamesh. Okay, the epic of Gilgamesh is all about this right here. They're telling you, but they're trying to portray it as good. They were good. Zeus was good. Apollo was good. What's that one that lives in the sea? Poseidon, yeah, all of that. There's truth to that. But it's lost in the, the annals of time, the, the mist of time before the flood, time unknown. But those stories came through because they're very, very old stories. You can go back as far as the, the oldest form of writing ever discovered was the tablets of Gilgamesh, which was Babylonian, and they talk about all of this stuff right here. It's all there.
So is that the Babylon that's written?
Yes. And the spirit of Babylon is still alive today. That's why the world elites are out there creating human sacrifices. And they're raping and killing and eating children. And they're doing all this stuff and they're in your face with it. Now they don't even try to hide it. Epstein Island, all this crap they're doing, this is the ultra, ultra wealthy, rich world elites have totally given themselves over to these demonic forces. We are in a battle between good and evil, guys, I'm telling you. And it is, like I said, they don't even try to hide it. It's in your face. When they're putting tributes to Satan on the grannies, you know? Yeah. Yeah. So, but let's go back because we, we kind of digress there a little bit. Um. Okay, let me give you one more. Um, Genesis, chapter two. Okay, verse 15. Genesis two, 15. And the Lord God took the man and put him into the garden of Eden to dress it and to keep it. And the Lord God commanded the man, saying, of every tree of the garden thou mayest freely eat. Wait a minute. That's not. Let me go back. Hold on. That's not what I was looking for. Um. Verse 26, chapter one, verse 26. Genesis, chapter one and verse 26. And God said, let us make man in our image and after our likeness. And let them have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the fowl of the air and over all the earth and over every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth. So God made man in his own image. In the image of God created he him, male and female created he them. And God blessed them and said unto them, be fruitful and multiply and replenish the earth. Replenish the earth. Now, if you, if I'm going to fill up my pantry, to replenish means to fill something up. To replenish it, to fill it up with groceries. But if I replenish my pantry, that means there was some groceries there before that I had to fill it up again to replenish. So when God says to them, replenish the earth, that lets you know, that's a dead giveaway, the earth was replenished before. Yes, many times. Replenish. It's right there. It's, 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 it's as clear as it can be. So, yeah, those, those dinosaur bones that they dig up and the T-Rex and then the velociraptor and all of that, those pertain to a previous creation where God in his creativity made all of these beautiful lizard-like creatures, these reptiles. They were more reptilian, you know? This world here is more a lot, you know, the mammals rule. Here, the mammals rule. But yeah, yeah. So I think that's, that's, I mean, what do you think, guys? Any questions and thoughts? He is the Leviathan. He is the serpent. Well, because he, he was more like a dinosaur, a lizard, and God took his legs off of him to, you know, to hu, to humble him because he told him, you know, you're going to go on your belly now. Yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's hilarious. But yeah, so yeah, he took his, he took his legs off. But yeah, he was that Leviathan, the crooked serpent is the one that crawled in, into the garden. Now, did y'all know there's a good serpent? Yeah. What did Moses's rod turn into? You know who the good serpent is? Jesus. Go to the book of John. Exactly. Well, does, does the, does the devil create or does he imitate? He, he imitates. What did Jesus say? He said, be wise as serpents, harmless as doves. There's a good serpent wisdom.
That's basically being vigilant. Being sober minded.
That's right.
Oh my God.
Learning how to move craftily, but for a good intention, not a wicked intention. See, the Paul, Paul, the apostle Paul told one of the churches, he says, I caught you with guile. In other words, I was sneaky about the way I drew you into the message of Christ. I used a wisdom. Watch this. Look at, look at here, guys. Man, we're having fun tonight. Yeah. Well, we, we, oh, here it is. Look, I flipped right to it. John three, 14. Can somebody read that for me? Read verse thirteen for me. Okay. He's saying that serpent that Moses made in the wilderness where people could look at it and be healed was a picture of me. Jesus is saying it's a picture of me. Because even as that, then I'm going to be lifted up when I'm lifted up on a cross as a good serpent of wisdom. The devil never creates, he only imitates. Yes. Well, i- if you look at the shroud of Turin, you kind of have a, an idea. He looked like, you know, a, a slender, rugged Jewish man. He was very slender. He was kind of bony.
Definitely not the American version.
No.
I, I would portray him.
Mm hmm. Exodus, chapter four. And verse one. And Moses answered and said, behold, they will not believe me nor hearken unto my voice. For they will say, the Lord hath not appeared unto thee. And the Lord said unto him, what is in thine hand? And he said, a rod. And he said, cast it on the ground. And he cast it on the ground and it became a serpent. And Moses fled from before it. Now, this is the rod that carried the power of the name of the Lord. This is the rod that opened the Red Sea. This is the rod that smoked the rock and waters came out. This was the rod of Moses's authority from the Lord. He's, but he cast it on the ground and he said, and, and verse four, and the Lord said unto Moses, put forth thine hand and take it by the tail. Now, you don't grab a serpent by the tail. It'll bite you. But God told him, take it by the tail, not the head. Because God was showing him, I'm the head. You don't control my head. I, you take it by the tail. You grab wisdom by the tail. And let him be the head. Let him do whatever he wants to do. The good serpent, see, the evil serpent tries to make us take our own head and be the head and control the head. Does that make sense?
It just, it just reminds me of, uh,
Yes. Touch the hem of his garment. She had a revelation, exactly.
That represents a tail.
That's, it does.
My God.
It does. You grab the humility, please. You having fun, champion boy? You grab the humility. You don't try to control the head. God's like, don't try to control the head. I'm the head. I'm in control. But you touch the bottom, you touch the hem and let him be the head and that's where healing comes. Woo, shah, mama, my higher. Ready. Let's go over to Exodus, chapter seven. And. Verse eight, verse eight. And the Lord spake unto Moses and unto Aaron, saying, when Pharaoh shall speak unto you, saying, show a miracle for you, then shalt thou say unto Aaron, take thy rod and cast it before Pharaoh and it shall become a serpent. Exodus, chapter seven and verse nine. It shall become a serpent. And Moses went in and actually, if you look up the word there for serpent, it's actually not serpent. It's actually dragon. The word is dragon. It's tawne in the Hebrew, not nachash. Nachash means serpent. Dragon is the word here in Hebrew. Yeah. There is. Yeah. Yeah, I'll take you there in a minute. I'll show it to you. Uh huh. Yeah. And Moses and Aaron went in unto Pharaoh, I'm in verse 10. And they did so as the Lord had commanded. And Aaron cast down his rod before Pharaoh and his servants, and it became a serpent. Then Pharaoh also called the wise men and the sorcerers, now the musician, magicians of Egypt. And they also did in like manner with their enchantments. So they were like, oh, that's no big deal. We can do that too. See, see the, 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 the devil has imitative power. You know, anything God does over here in miracles, Satan can imitate it. He, and, and he does. But God's miracles always triumph in the end. He says, a- and, and so with their enchantments, verse 12. For they cast down every man his rod and they became serpents. But Aaron's rod swallowed up their rods. In other words, the good serpent swallowed up all the evil serpents. That's right. That's exactly right. Now that's why when you get over here in the book of Exodus and God says, make a serpent of brass and put it on a pole and whoever looks at it will be healed, was he saying, look at the devil? No. Look at Jesus. Jesus is the good serpent of wisdom. The wisdom of the heavenly father. And see, God gives us that wisdom to know how to move craftily, know how to move with wisdom. And so he says, well, over in the book of John, as Moses lifted up the serpent, he said, even I will be lifted up. In other words, I'm the fulfillment of what Moses did over there.
Actually, the, what, what's, what's he said, um, serpent and whoever looks is healing?
Yeah.
It just reminded me of the, the medical sign.
That's where it comes from.
With the snake wrapped around the pole?
That's where it comes from. That's the symbol. That's the symbol of healing and that's why, that's where it comes from.
No way.
Every ambulance in America has the.
That is insane.
Hippocrates. I don't know. I, I don't know. He was, certainly had wisdom.
Well, he, he asked to, about.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that symbol. Let, let me show you about good dragons, Mackenzie, so we can, let me give you that. See, see, and that's the thing people have to understand, you know? If you're gonna really go deep in the Word, there are things that you're gonna look at and you're gonna go, man, that's kind of, I mean, there are things in the Bible that'll make you scratch your head. But understand, anything that you see in the occult world is an imitative desire, uh, what do you say? It's ripped off from God's truth. And they've taken it and perverted it. Um, I'm looking for a scripture here. Uh, dur, 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 L M N O P Q R. There we go. Um, yeah.
Oh, you just said, uh, Hippocrates. It just reminds, it just reminded me of the Hippocrates post that Michael said after four life.
That's right.
It, it just, wow.
Yeah. Go to Psalm one forty-eight. And see, it's, 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 it's really pathetic how little Christians actually know about their Bibles. And, and, and what a s- just a surface level understanding they have. These are the mysteries of the word of God that will enlighten your eyes. And man, I can't wait till Sunday night. I'm gonna tell you all about the seven lamps. I've told you about the sixty-six bowls, knops and flowers, but I haven't told you what those seven lamps represent. And that's gonna blow your mind. It's gonna open your mind to so many things in the word. Those seven lamps. Psalms one forty-eight, verse seven. Mackenzie, since this is your scripture, I want you to read verse seven. Okay. The, you got sea creatures. Well, that's not really clear. The word, the word in Hebrew is dragon, tawne. Huh? Well, it's, no, it's not Leviathan. It's, but there are good dragons. Leviathan was simply one dragon that went astray. Lucifer is called a dragon. In the book of Revelation, Bible calls him the dragon. And so then that opens, why do you think Chinese culture? Chinese culture is known for their wisdom. They're very wise. And they're all about dragons. Their culture is very steeped in the lore and the mythology of dragons because they stole this wisdom from God. Yeah. So I'm gonna read it in King James. Psalm one forty-eight, verse seven, praise the Lord from the earth, ye dragons, and all deeps. Huh? Fire inhales, snow vapors, stormy wind fulfilling his word. Praise the Lord, ye dragons. Now, dragons don't praise the Lord, not the bad ones. The bad ones don't praise the Lord. But these, that he's commanding, these good dragons, there are dragons in the deep that cry out and praise the Lord. Praise his name.
When we say deep, do you mean like, like oceans that, or like?
Deep. Abyss deep. Abyss deep. See, there's a lot of things I gotta tell you about the deep.
Like where the, like where the, uh, where the earth was at the face of the deep?
Yes. Same word. Same word.
What I noticed in the Bible is the first, first quote was, everything was still up.
Yep.
So in the first verse of the, remember the two days? Praise you the Lord, praise you from, praise you the Lord from the heavens. Praise him from the heavens. So obviously, it's possibly not something that belongs.
Exactly right. Mm-hmm.
Very good. Make sure the water is from the heavens.
He certainly does. Whi- which one, which verse is it there?
Um, what is that? Uh?
Crazy, uh, you wa- there it is, verse four. Praise him, ye heavens of heavens. So there's more than one heaven. Y'all knew that. Uh-huh. Well, there's, there's the, there's the heavens. And then there's the heaven above the heavens. And then there is the heaven of heavens. Paul said, the Apostle Paul said, I was caught up to the third heaven. There are layers and realms in heaven that go higher and higher and higher. There's more than one heaven and he ra- says it right here, ye heavens of heavens.
So you think that would be like, separate? People like get to heaven in a way, like?
Yeah.
They'd be like, the ones who like barely made it or just be like, or?
I did a big lesson. Remember that, Mackenzie?
Ones who have like the treasures stored up.
For those who have given their whole life and really served and really surrendered and sold out to God, there's gonna be a greater reward for them in eternity. And, and that's too big of a lesson for me to go into right now. But, um, we can go, I could probably find it on my video channel if you wanted to listen to it sometime and send it to you, or you could go back through the, through the old, you know, ones. We were here in this living room when I taught it. Huh? Yeah, you remember that?
Well, that was, no, that was something. Cause it's, it's really, you know, if you feel that and just to really feel the stuff. And, you know, I didn't realize how, how little I knew about the Bible.
I'm telling you, yeah.
Right, that's a, write down certain things. Probably write down also six books for the Bible. I was like, I didn't even know this book was, you already know there's a book called this. I'm like, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
Like, I'm like, okay, well, thank you.
Well, and I'm gonna tell you, I told Jasmine the same thing recently. I said, babe, I said, the more I study, the more I'm learning that I know nothing about the Bible. And compared to some, they might think I know a lot. But compared to what I know there is to know and the questions that I have, because see, the more you learn, the more it's gonna unlock other questions. And you're gonna go, oh, well, if this, then what about that? And what about this? And you realize the more you learn, the less you know. But what that does is lets you know how awesome our God is and how great his ways are above our ways.
So devil, I find, you know, but devil makes restricted feelings.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, after I realized almost they don't know the Bible, the devil's like coming in and saying, oh, look at you, what you're talking about. Is that so, first time? First time?
Yeah. Well, exactly.
The devil wants to speed up the reality of time.
Mm-hmm.
But when God says, first time, you and me all have to do it.
Mm-hmm.
First, going to be.
Yeah. The thief on the cross made it to the highest degree of reward in a couple of hours. Hanging next to J- Jesus told him, today thou shalt be with me in paradise. You don't have to know a lot in order to go to the highest level in God. The only thing you have to do is completely surrender yourself. Now, the more you know, the more it helps you to surrender yourself. And the more it helps you to have wisdom to know how to a- address certain things and wisdom of how to live your life and, you know, so many things like that. But it's not about what you know, it's about who you know.
Exactly, and and that's, like, I knew the Bible was important.
Mm-hmm.
But I knew it was important. I knew I needed to, um, read it, to understand God and go with it. But I would always put it off.
Yeah.
Like, and I have to lie, like I'll start reading a bunch of it and then I have to take a break and go off.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I cannot just sit there and.
Well, it's, it's like, it, it's like this. See, w- when we grow, when a baby sits down at the table, they're not ready to have steak yet. They gotta have maybe first off milk and then maybe some applesauce. And then maybe some mashed up peas. And then, you know, mama will chop up steak real fine. And it's just like that. You can't just say, okay, junior, sit down and eat all the food you're gonna need for the rest of your life in one sitting, so you'll grow. It would kill you. It would literally kill you. So you have to eat day by day. And that's how it is as we grow in God. We go back to the word. You know, I go to things that I've studied for years and I'll look at it and go, I never saw that. I never knew that was there. You know, and I've been studying the Bible intensely for thirty years. A- and I see things every day that I'm like, I never knew that was there. A- because why? Because that's a sign you're growing. See, the devil will try to tell you, oh, look how, you don't know anything. No. Now that I realize I didn't know that before, that's because I've grown. So look at that as a, as a positive thing because you're growing. And the more you grow in God, the more you're gonna see. True that, right? What's that?
It's good that, like you said, it's good that you don't know, but you do it.
Exactly.
But also, it also says, also that, where if you think you know it, you don't know it.
Exactly.
Once you acknowledge that you really don't know it, then you're right.
Yeah.
And it's okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, God's always teaching a lot, a lot about his, his entire mission to do this thing. It's really showing me a lot of things that I didn't see.
Yeah.
I have a lot of things I didn't see myself, for example.
Amen.
I still have certain mindsets against it that I really.
Exactly.
And it's just really dangerous.
Yeah. Uh, so this is, you got a question?
No.
No? Does that, that kinda answer your question a little bit, where the dinosaurs fit in?
Yeah.
Yeah? There's just so much to know, guys, and so much to learn. And the more we learn, the more we grow. And the more we grow, the more we learn. And the more you grow, the bigger food you can eat. You know, you know, you, you can eat higher levels of food. Moving up, you know, one level after another, one level after another. And it's endless. It never stops. And you know what? When we get over there, we're gonna, we're gonna keep learning. We're gonna keep learning things we never knew before. God's gonna keep revealing himself. He's an infinite God. How could he ever stop revealing himself? When could we ever get to the place where we say, okay, I understand all of God now? Never. But it's greater and higher and deeper and broader as we go with him.
Yeah, I was sitting the other day and I was, I was just asking about, I was like, and y'all had the disciples are up in heaven?
Yeah.
I wonder how they react when they.
Can you imagine?
The way that, you know, they go from becoming, you know, this guy's literal family. His literal family, you know? Not only because they're seeing miracles and not because, um, having miracles in their own lives, but because he loved, he genuinely loved that he's very.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden he died, a person's death in front of them. And they say, you know, they're grieving and saying, how can this man be whatever, you know, goes through all these emotions? Finally, see him go back up and then they finally see him again. Cause I, I, I just.
Can you imagine?
And, and, no. I wanna say I'm jealous of that.
Yeah.
I'm not jealous of that, but it's like, but I'm, okay, how do I put this? I am really happy to the life God has created.
Yes.
But at the same time, it's like, I wonder, like, you know?
What that must have been like. Yeah.
That overwhelming, not even joy, but.
Yeah.
Wasn't joy?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Exactly. You know, and Jesus said in one place, he said, you know, blessed are your eyes because you have seen and believed. He said, but how much more blessed it is to have never seen and yet believe. Because we've never seen, you know, well, I have seen him, but in the flesh, as a person. Said. No, no, I, I was finished. What, what were you gonna say?
I heard so many stories about, or outside the.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'm like, this, the flesh is still on him, like.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I often, and I, I don't know, I don't know if it's really safe enough. But like you were watching the video on Facebook about this guy named Elijah coming down, talking about everything that happened this time. And I'm like, you know what? At this point, I wouldn't even doubt it. Because the way the world's coming, of course, like, I don't, I wouldn't even doubt God sending Elijah back right now.
Well, the Bible says that Elijah will come back.
Right.
Yes, he is.
For sure.
And you know who the other one is? You got it. Boom. Enoch and Elijah. God's gonna send those guys back.
Enoch never died. A lot of people say Moses, but.
Yeah. But you gotta understand why Enoch. Because think about it. Enoch was alive during the days of the Nephilim. He was alive when the Nephilim were on the earth. Read the book of Enoch. And he dealt with those creatures. He had the spiritual authority to overcome them way back there. God's gonna bring him back at the end because as it was in the days of Noah, so shall it be in the days of the coming of the Son of Man. God's gonna send Enoch and Elijah to come back and fight those guys and take authority over them.